Calls meeting order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. I please let the record reflect that all members are, who are members are present except for Angie Jacobs. She had something come up just at this last moment, so she regrets she can't be with us this evening. First is visitor comments. Do we have any visitors? No, looks like all familiar faces. Okay, so we have the consent agenda and there's the approval of minutes. There was the April 11th work session and the April 17th regular board meeting. There's also the treasurer's report for April of 2023. And Mr. Donald, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I could like to consider gross wages on April 14th, 2023 for $717,028,28.44 for gross wages on April 28th, 2023 for $708,198.67 for a grand total of $1,425,227.12 for claims prepay of 4/1, 23 through 4/30 of 23 for $1,663.83 for regular for claim vouchers for 5/15, 2023 for $554,162.11 for claims Forest Hill vouchers for 5/16, 2023 for $5,452.97 for a grand total of $2219,942.81 for grand total for both gross wages and claim vouchers for $3,645,169.93.
Thank you, Mr. Donald. Also happy to report three donations this month. There's $51 from Free Staff Wellness Class for the Healthy Schools Fund. There is $40 from Heather and Benjamin Niehoff for the Junior High Robotics Club for supplies. And Coca-Cola has provided over 500 sets of headphones to be used for the I-Learn testing. For personnel resignations, retirements, non-manuals, leaves and terminations, we have D-1 through 17. And for personnel appointments and transfers, we have E-1 through 17. And there are four trips. Dr. Sanders, would you like to explain those?
Yes. So the first two trips are actually for the Edgewood High School Boys Basketball Team. Number two says junior high, but it's actually high school. And so the first one is Indiana State University for July 4th through the 16th. And then the second one is, would be to Indiana Wesleyan, and that's June 26th through the 28th. The football camp overnight will be to Hanover College, and that's July 11th through the 13th. And finally, we're asking the board to approve the choir out-of-state trip to New York for a music competition, and that'll be March 21st through the 24th of 2024. Music warehouse, sophisticated ladies and crew will all be participating in that competition. If you have any other questions, Dirk Ackerman is here tonight to answer those questions. Or maybe if he just wants to say to you, where'd you walk to?
Just don't ask me any hard questions. As always, the sports teams are busy during the summer. Those are really great opportunities for the sports teams. It gives them an opportunity to get away, in some cases, just to get away for more kind of a more intense practicing. For others, it's competing against other schools that we wouldn't normally compete against. And then the choir trip, I had been on a choir trip to New York City. I've been on a lot of choir trips over the years, and I will tell you that the New York City trip is the most educational and really the best opportunity for kids. When you think about show choir and how that matches with a Broadway musical, you just really can't beat that. But just the opportunity to go to Broadway and see the environment and to really experience it is really a neat experience for the kids. There's not an itinerary yet. We worked on trying to get one. It's not available, but they did go ahead and give us a price to narrow in on. So hope the information you need is there. Any questions?
It's great to get it approved early so that they have time to fundraise and prepare for that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. There's also money, you know, if it came down to it, and Brian usually does this now, the Contest of Champions and the 'Tis the Season account is, you know, in pretty good shape, so he might offer to pay for one of the mills or something, just to defray a little bit of the cost as well, so.
Awesome.
All right.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That being the consent agenda, is there a motion?
No, I'll move approval for the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Will you second? Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have the Assistant Superintendent's report. Unfortunately, Matt Irwin could not be with us this evening. His wife's grandfather passed away, so our condolences and prayers go out to that family.
His wife's grandfather, did you say that?
I think I say wife's grandfather, yeah. So prayers go out to that, to that family. So the, Mr. Irwin did provide us all with the cash flows already by email, so we have that. Did you have any comments on that? So now we have a number of public hearings that we have to go through, and it's because we're doing some really great things here at the RBB schools. And so when you are doing good things, you're busy and lots has to happen to make this work. So first, we're going to have a preliminary determination public hearing, and this would be for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. If you are, if there's anyone here interested in speaking this evening, okay, there's rules for that, but I guess we'll move on. I do want to note for the record that notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. And at this time, I'll ask that Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinnon Evans explain the purpose of this hearing.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. For this one, I'll kind of talk high level just about the overall process, and then for the next ones, I'll just kind of take you through each of them. I know you guys have been through this already. So this project is one of six projects that you guys are, are beginning the authorization process for. This is the second preliminary determination hearing for this Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. You have another project, the Student Activity Center project, that will have a second preliminary determination hearing tonight. And then all six of the projects have to have what are called 1028 public hearings. Once you get through these, we have to send out some notices and we'll start down your normal building corporation authorization, which I know you guys have been through in the past. But this is all part of a potential bond issue for not to exceed $40 million to fund the six projects. It would be a financing accomplished to your building corporation, so it wouldn't be a general obligation. The building corporation issues bonds, you lease facilities from the building corporation, the lease payments line up with the bond payments. We'd be looking at lease approvals and had, there'd be some public hearings related to those in June with bond document approvals in July, and then potentially marketing the bonds in late July or whenever Stiefel kind of coordinates with, with Jerry and Matt and kind of determines it's the best time. But we'd be through all the authorization processes and in a position to close in August. So again, this first project, because it's above the threshold for what constitutes a controlled project, has to have two preliminary determination hearings. You guys held the first preliminary determination hearing for this last week, and so this would be the second preliminary determination hearing. The information kind of related to these and included in the resolutions related to these, I would just note that that's all maximum, kind of not to exceed financial terms. And then the last thing I want to note is that there is some statutorily required information over here on the table that's, that's available during the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
We will now hear from Dr. Sanders, our superintendent, about the process of determining the scope of the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project and the need for that project. Dr. Sanders?
So for all the public hearings that we'll be having tonight, we use the same process which began in the spring of 2022 when we asked Lancer Architecture Firm to conduct a facility assessment study. That was conducted by providing them with drawings of our facilities. They interviewed administration, maintenance and other staff. They took tours of our facilities and took pictures of our existing conditions and then made recommendations. Since that time, the board has held several work sessions related to the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project and the other projects that we'll be mentioning tonight. The early, Edgewood Early Childhood Center project consists of the acquisition, construction and equipping by the school corporation of a new early childhood center and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs, replacements and equipping by the school corporation. There's obviously, if you've been around Monroe County over the last few years, there's clear evidence across the county that there is a lack of early childhood education for families. This is evidenced by the fact that our preschool last year and this year maxed out in a matter of minutes, and we have a waiting list of approximately 100 preschool students. So we could clearly double the current size of the preschool and be able to serve all these families.
We're from Stiefel Financial Advisors. There are underwriters, and Mr. Schumacher is going to explain how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer. And I will take the opportunity to say too, that when they say that there's information available on the table, that if you're not attending, you're catching this by cats, you can call central office and request copies of that documentation that will be provided for you.
Thank you. So I handed out this presentation. I will walk you through quickly. I know you saw it last week with my colleague Chad. I have extra copies if anyone in the audience wants to see one as well. I will make this quick, but of course, happy to answer any questions that the board or public has. So starting on page two with the school corporation's outstanding debt payments, this breaks down everything that the school pays out of the debt service fund. It's color-coded by obligation stacked on top of each other to show the annual payments. You will notice that the payments in 2023, excuse me, are much larger than any of the other payments. This is intentional. This goes back to a lot of the planning that Dr. Sanders and Matt and the school board have done over the last several years to be in this position today. When we're talking about new projects, this is the exact picture that we want to see. We want to see this picture because it means you can add on additional payments in the future, but you can do so without increasing the tax rate. As we'll talk about here in a little bit, we're actually targeting to bring down the tax rate a little bit. But again, this shows everything as it stands today that is paid out of your debt service fund. Looking at the next page, this looks at the combined project, the proposed $40 million in bonds, and illustrates how it could be repaid. I want to make note that this is not locked in. This is not the only option. There will be plenty of conversations between now and when we sell the bonds to make sure that we're structuring it in the most efficient way for the school corporation and its taxpayers. The light gray denotes current outstanding debt. What I just showed you on the last page, the dark blue layers on top, those represent payments from the proposed combined project. And you can see the tax rate there in the blue line graph. We show that going down over the next couple of years with large drops in '26 and '27. So we're accomplishing two things. We're lowering the tax rate. We're also providing the school corporation with flexibility in the near term should there be additional facility needs to come back, take care of those, address those at that time, again, without a tax increase in the future as well. The next page breaks down the total tax rate projections. The debt service tax rate obviously is just one component of that. There's also the operations tax rate. Taxpayers, when they look at their tax bill, they're going to look at the total tax rate. They're not going to segregate between the two. So this attempts to show you moving forward what that total tax rate projection looks like. In 2023, you can see where your tax rate was, just right at a dollar seven. Even after we issued these bonds, proposed bonds in 2023, you can see the tax rate is projected to drop roughly a penny each year in '24 and '25, and then again, provide that flexibility beginning as early as '26 for additional facility needs, if there are any at that time. Do so again in the future without increasing the tax rate. So all of this is a very long-term plan. We want to make sure that we're making decisions that are not only best for the school corporation today, but also meets the needs of the school corporation's future facility needs as well. The last few pages are the financial parameters that you will see in the resolution that Jacob discussed. I know there are several resolutions in front of you. We've put the financial parameters of the two larger projects and then the combined project as well. Walk through all of these right now if that's okay, and then we can reference back to these as you go through the different resolutions. So starting with Edgewood ECC project, the proposed 2023 bonds related to just that project, maximum par amount of the bonds listed at $14,500,000. We're estimating cost of issuance and underwriters discount, those are upfront professional fees, at $125,000. That would leave proceeds available for hard and soft project costs, the money going into the project at $14,375,000. Final maturity of the bonds can be no more than 20 years after the date of issuance. Maximum interest rate, we have listed 6%. If you were issuing these bonds today, you'd be less than 4%, but we are listing really the maximum financial parameters, the worst-case scenario. Rates have risen, they've continued to rise. We think they've somewhat leveled off now, but again, since we're not issuing these bonds for potentially several months, we need to paint the worst-case scenario. We do not expect to issue these bonds at 6%, but that's what's been listed in the parameters. Based on the $14.5 million borrowing with a 6% maximum interest rate, you're looking at estimated interest expense of $10,228,236. If and when we end up issuing these bonds, hopefully at a much lower interest rate, that interest expense will come down significantly. Maximum annual payment, that's the highest payment you can have in any one year related to this portion of the project, $3275,000. Maximum total payments, that's over the life of the repayment of the bond issues, is listed at $30 million. Moving on to the Student Activity Center, we're looking at maximum par amount of $8 million, estimated cost of issuance, $100,000, leaving $7.9 million to go into the project. Again, final maturity, 20 years after the issuance, 6% maximum rate based on the borrowing amount and that interest rate, $6 million of interest expense. Again, that should come down significantly if we can sell the bonds at a lower rate. Maximum annual payment, $2 million. Maximum total payments over the life of the project is $15 million. I will do the combined project last and then my portion will be done, but again, happy to answer any questions. So this is a big one, maximum par amount of the bonds, $40 million. Again, that's a not-to-exceed number, does not obligate you to borrow every last penny. You can borrow any number up to that. You cannot go above and beyond that. Estimated cost of issuance and underwriters discount, we're estimating $500,000. We expect that to be a conservative figure. That would leave $39.5 million of project, project fund, money going into the project. Final maturity of the bonds, still 20 years after issuance, same 6% maximum interest rate. Estimated interest expense on the entire project, $75 million. Again, we expect that to come down significantly when and if these bonds are sold. The total maximum annual payment of all projects, $9 million. The total maximum payments of all the projects, $115 million over the life. The 2022 pay 2023 debt service tax rate, so the current debt service tax rate of the school corporation in this budget year, $0.67.91. We are estimating that debt service tax rate for pay 2024, next budget year, to drop to $0.65.19, so an actual tax rate reduction. Then the last two pieces that the statute requires us to put in, this looks at your maximum annual payments, so the highest amount that you're paying on all of your obligations, divides it by your assessed value, that comes out to be $0.60.27. And then your direct and overlapping debt, that is the debt of the school corporation and any of the other municipalities within this taxing district that the taxpayers would see as a percentage of your assessed value, that is 5.48%. I know that was a lot. Questions I can answer at this time or happy to answer during the, the public comment as well.
I just want to clarify that based even with the conservative estimates and the worst-case interest rates and all that, we can still maintain the, the dropping of the tax rate over the course of this.
Based on everything that we know as of today, there could certainly be some curveballs. There were some legislative changes, but I feel confident in saying that you can complete this project while dropping the tax rate a penny in the next two years. Worst-case scenario, we get to this fall when you get your assessed value and it's an absolute curveball and your AV drops significantly. We do not expect that to happen. Having said all that, yes, I fully expect you to be able to accomplish this based on everything that we've shown.
Thank you. I think what we got, we got our assessed, our new assessed value last week, so it has gone up, so that should help us for next year. But I want to make sure I got, like Mr. Nemah said, if we're able to get these issued at 4%, that means we could even lower our tax rate more, correct? That would be our, that's our long-term goal.
That option will be on the table, yes.
It depends out, but we're doing worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to project in the future. The legislative changes did impact some components of your assessed value, so it's somewhat of a guessing game in the future, but unless you see a significant impact, I think that's going to be on the table for you to decide, yes, lowering the tax rate even more.
Okay, so then on the combined estimated proceeds that are available, hard slash soft cost, and this kind of comes back to up to maybe Mr., from bar from Skilman, can answer later. I want to, before the night ends, I want to get a kind of a really better understanding of what the soft cost, what all incurred, because I mean, that was a big chunk of change out of that, like we, it left us like $32 million for a hard cost. I just want to know what I, I just want to make sure I can understand it, and it might help maybe a couple of other board members understand it as well, so fair enough.
Get to that, Paul.
Yeah.
But, but the half, but the half million to get them issued, that's part of the soft cost.
Correct. Okay, got you. Okay.
That's what we're saying.
Okay, perfect.
Governor, I'm sure one of the teachers on the campus is here. He's provided the board with some drawings of the two larger projects, the Edgewood Early Childhood Center and the Edgewood High School New Student Activity Center, so.
A little bit of, it's about to pass around now.
Yeah.
Okay.
We will now open this public hearing, open to public comment. Are there any individuals who would like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, then I will officially close the public hearing on the preliminary determination for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center. Thank you. Next, we move to our next hearing, which is, oh, we got a resolution first.
Yes.
Yes. Now we have the consideration to approve the preliminary determination resolution, and so, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so now that we've concluded the two public hearings for the preliminary determination, I would like to ask the board to approve the preliminary determination resolution for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. This resolution was included in your board packet, and you have a copy at your desk tonight. I recommend approval.
I move the adoption of the resolution for the Early Childhood Center project.
Will you second? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to our second preliminary determination public hearing, so I will open the public hearing for the Student Activity Center preliminary determination. The, again, if you're interested in speaking, there's some guidelines, but I don't see any about here. It is important to note that notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required, and at this time, I'll ask Jacob McClellan to come back up from Bose McKinnon Evans to explain the purpose of this hearing.
Sure, so, so this is the second preliminary determination hearing for this particular project. And again, this one has the extra hearings because of the size, and then overall, this is for the, for the bigger bond issue, you know, totaling six projects. One thing I wanted to just note is, in all of these, I know we've been saying $40 million not to exceed amount. If you add everything up based on the numbers from Skillman, it's $39,998,750. I know you guys know that, but I thought I'd note that for the record, so.
Thank you. We will now hear from this superintendent, Dr. Sanders, about the process of determining the scope of the need for the Student Activity Center project.
Right. Once again, the Student Activity Center project came out of the facility study done by Lancer. It consists of acquisition, construction and equipping by the school corporation of a new student activity center and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs and replacements. Our current auxiliary gym at Edgewood High School does not provide adequate space for athletic events. There is just absolutely no space for us when we use that facility for junior high basketball or any other activity for spectators. And also, the, the court is awful close to the, the existing walls, which is kind of a, not kind of, it is a safety hazard, and so this project will enable us to make better use of the, of an auxiliary gym or a student activity center and also increase the safety of our students.
Thank you. We're now here from Stiefel, our underwriter, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information, again, on the typical taxpayer. We want to incorporate by reference the, that suitable?
I think that's fine.
Okay. We'll incorporate by reference the documentation that Stiefel has provided on that issue. And so now we'll open this public hearing for any individuals who would like to speak on this matter. Is there anyone available? Hearing none, I will officially close the public hearing on the preliminary determination of the Student Activity Center project. And so that brings us to the resolution of the Board of School Trustees of RBB School Corporation to, for the preliminary determination for the Student Activity Center project. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so having completed the two preliminary determine, determination public hearings, I'd like to have board to please approve the preliminary determination resolution for the Student Activity Center project at Edgewood High School.
I'll approve.
I'll second.
Will you second? Any questions or comments? And this has been in your packet. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll continue on to the 1028 hearings for each of the projects, and so the, we'll now, a 1028 hearing for the proposed Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. Again, if there's anybody who would like to speak, there'll be an opportunity later. And again, it is important to note that notice of this preliminary determination, this 1028 hearing was published as legally required. Jacob McClellan is here as our bond counsel.
So just for reference, anytime you're going to undertake a project that will be paid from bond proceeds that are payable from property taxes, and that project's over a million dollars in size, you have to hold a million dollars in size, you have to hold a public hearing on the project and kind of take into account the tax impact. With the first two projects, with the Early Childhood Center project and the Student Activity Center project, there's great overlap between what you've already done with your preliminary determination hearings and what you're going to do for the ten twenty-eight, and so that's the purpose behind these hearings, but there's six of them, one for each project, and if you look at your resolution, your resolution related to this, item three, goes through everything that Stifel already went through as far as the tax impact, and, you know, overall, the idea is to keep the tax rate level, so ultimately, as things roll off, you'll be rapping your debt to keep it level, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Okay. We will now hear from Dr. Sanders regarding the process of determining the scope of the Edgewood Early Childhood.
So, it would be the same as I mentioned in the preliminary determination.
Incorporate that by reference, and it's also suitable, we can, you covered the conglomerate of the projects as well during your presentation earlier, so if it's okay, we'll incorporate by reference that material that's been provided, and again, it is available, if you contact the corporation, we'll be happy to get that to you. So I have to officially open this ten twenty-eight hearing for public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, ten twenty-eight hearing on the Edgewood Early Childhood Project, and we'll turn to the resolution for the ten twenty-eight.
So I'd like the board to consider approving the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. Once again, you have had these resolutions in your board packet, and you have them before you tonight.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Ten twenty-eight project resolution for the Early Childhood Center.
I'll second.
Move a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next ten twenty-eight hearing is for the Student Activity Center, and again, it's important to note that the notice of this ten twenty-eight hearing was published as legally required, and we'll turn again to Jacob McClellan, our bond counsel.
So again, another ten twenty-eight hearing, this one for the Student Activity Center project, essentially the same information that was provided for the preliminary determination hearings on the Student Activity Center project. I don't really have anything to add other than, you know, these are, you've gotten your resolution, the information that, that, you know, you've already been provided from Stifel, but ultimately, the thing to note here is that, you know, even though we have to list the potential tax impact, the idea is to keep the tax rate level, so.
Thank you, and incorporate by reference Dr. Sanders' determination of why this project is needed, and also incorporate by reference Stifel's financial information towards this project. I'll open the public hearing for public comment. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing on the ten twenty-eight project for the Student Activity Center. And now we'll move to the resolution for this ten twenty-eight.
So, once again, the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Student Activity Center project at Edgewood High School has been presented to the board, I'd like to ask for your approval.
I move approval, Student Activity Center project, ten twenty-eight resolution.
I'll second.
Move a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we've got a couple new projects to look at, and so we will now open the ten twenty-eight public hearing for the Edgewood Primary School project, and I will note that this ten twenty-eight public hearing was, notice was properly published as required legally, and I'll turn it over again to Jacob McClellan, our bond counsel.
So again, this is the same type of hearing, because the project will be over a million dollars. This is for the Edgewood Primary School project, which consists of the acquisition, construction, renovation, upgrading, equipping by the school corporation of Edgewood Primary School, including finished replacements and upgrades and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs, replacements, and equipping by the school corporation. It's anticipated not to, to be in an amount of not to exceed three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and Dr. Sanders, could you explain the need for this project?
Right, so our two elementary schools have been surprisingly around for twenty years. They look like they're about three or four years old in some places, but one of the areas, there are some areas, and one of those areas is carpeting that we, and flooring throughout the building, and that's probably the biggest area that we'll be focusing on with this project.
Let's see, this is, do you have anything additional to add for this project?
I was just going to mention the maximum part of the budget, but it's set up.
Okay.
And the resolution has all of the.
The items to kind of consider, which is what, everything that Stifel went through, which is, you know, we have to consider what the tax impact would be based on a twenty-year amortization and a max lease amount, but ultimately, I think the most important thing that you guys want to get at is that the deck, that the debt service rate will remain zero, or not be impacted, I should say, not remain zero, remain level.
Impact.
Zero would be great, right? If you could somehow do a project and keep it zero, but it will remain level.
Okay, and now officially open the meeting for public comment. Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, this, I'll now close the public hearing for the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Edgewood Primary School project, and for that resolution, I'll turn to Dr. Sanders.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to approve the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Edgewood Primary School project.
I move adoption of the ten twenty-eight. Resolution for the primary school project.
I'll second.
Move a second. Any questions, comments?
So, of these last four projects.
Per project, three point seven five million is the max, correct?
It's.
Per project.
So, statutorily, you can't exceed six million, one hundred and thirty thousand. We have the primary school project at three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, the intermediate project at three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, the kitchen project at five million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty, and the, what do we call it, the, bear with me here, the school renovations, lighting, and security project at four million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to the, I will officially open the ten twenty-eight public hearing for the Edgewood Intermediate School project. Once again, notice was duly published as required, and so, Mr. McClellan.
So again, this is another public hearing that we have to hold to kind of consider the tax impact related to the intermediate school project, because the project is anticipated to cost more than a million dollars. The estimate that you guys have for the project is three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. The project, just for the record, consists of the acquisition, construction, renovation, upgrading, and equipping by the school corporation of Edgewood Intermediate School, including finished replacements and upgrades and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs, replacements, and equipping by the school corporation. The resolution that goes along with, with this project, the ten twenty-eight resolution, includes all the information required related to the tax rate and the potential tax impact, and ultimately, the impact should be to keep your tax rate level, so.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Sanders, could you talk about the need at Edgewood Intermediate School?
Pretty much the same as with the primary school, there are areas in the school where the carpeting is significantly frayed and beyond repair, and in this project, both of them will actually help us to meet other needs that were identified through the facility study, but the main focus will be the carpeting.
Is there going to be anything towards cabinetry?
Yes.
That's what I thought, yeah, there was some cabinetry damaged in a, in a water issue previously, so that would also be addressed. So, we believe Stifel have, he's incorporated all the financial information in that as well, so that's been covered, so I'll now open the public hearing, ten twenty-eight hearing on the Edgewood Intermediate School project. Any speakers seeing none? I will now officially close the public hearing on the ten twenty-eight hearing for the Edgewood Intermediate School project, and we will turn to the resolution for such. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, I'd like the board to consider approving the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Edgewood Intermediate School project.
I move adoption of the Edgewood Intermediate School project, ten twenty-eight resolution.
Second.
Move a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, I will officially open the ten twenty-eight public hearing for the Edgewood High School Kitchen project, and once again, notice of this ten twenty-eight hearing was published as legally required, and turned over again to Mr. McClellan, our bond counsel.
Sure, so again, this is a public hearing that's required if your project's going to cost more than a million dollars and be payable from bond proceeds, payable from property taxes. The project consists of the acquisition, construction, renovation, upgrading, equipping by the school corporation of a new kitchen at Edgewood High School, together with upgrading, expansion, and renovation of the Edgewood High School cafeteria, related classroom upgrades and renovations, and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs, replacements, and equipping by the school corporation. The project's anticipated not to exceed five million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The ten twenty-eight resolution that go, that accompanies this, this project goes through the tax impact in paragraph three, and ultimately, the idea is to keep the tax rate level and not impact the tax rate, so with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Dr. Sandward, Sanders, about the need for this particular project.
Yes, I distinctly remember when the board took a tour of our facilities, and we looked at the kitchen at Edgewood High School, it was very clear that it was too small, it needs to be expanded, and this project will also enable us to expand the cafeteria. Right now, the students use the commons area to eat lunch, and so this will enable us to expand the cafeteria and put in some seating that I think will be appreciated by our high school students.
Yet, for the financial impact, Mr. McClellan has assessed that, and we, again, referenced the information we have, did you have anything further? Okay, okay. And so I'll now officially open the public comment portion of this ten twenty-eight hearing. Any takers seeing none? Then now I will officially close the ten twenty-eight hearing for the Edgewood High School Kitchen project, and we will turn to the ten twenty-eight resolution for the same. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so, once again, I'd like to ask the board to approve the ten twenty-eight resolution for the Edgewood High School Kitchen project.
I move adoption of the resolution, ten twenty-eight resolution for the high school kitchen project.
Move a second. Questions, comments?
Just, I appreciate Victor Coffey's presentation about it, and I, it occurs to me that that probably is the oldest part of the facilities on our campus that has received the least amount of attention over the last fifty, sixty years now, and it certainly is, is due.
And having the tour, being single file only, going through it, tells you how tight it is.
I remember hiring Victor, she's been at Booth for a long time.
But she has kept it running wonderfully, so we appreciate that. Any further comments?
So, everything that's in pink.
Is part of the, this project, right?
Yes.
The new, the new kitchen, the cafeteria expansion, the classrooms, that's all part of this project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there will be, we're going to have to coordinate the Student Activity Center and the kitchen project in terms of, during the construction, because it's, it's going to be some overlap. Yeah, it's ours.
She's not her, who's that for you there?
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we are on our last public hearing, so I'll now open the ten twenty-eight public hearing for the school renovations, lighting, and security project. Once again, the notice of this ten twenty-eight hearing was published as legally required, and we'll turn again to Mr. McClellan, our bond counsel.
So, the, the final public hearing tonight for these, again, it's a project over a million dollars, you have to conduct the public hearing. The, the school renovations, lighting, and security project consists of the acquisition, construction, renovation, upgrading, and equipping by the school corporation of finished replacements and upgrades at Edgewood High School, football and track sound system upgrades and improvements, main gymnasium sound system upgrades and improvements, parking expansion and improvements at all school corporation facilities, sports field lighting upgrades and improvement, safety and security upgrades and improvements at all school corporation facilities, and certain other renovations, improvements, upgrades, repairs, and replacements, and equipping by the school corporation. I'd just note that the resolution that accompanies, the ten twenty-eight resolution that accompanies this public hearing goes through the information required by the statute related to the tax impact provided by Stifel. Ultimately, the idea is that your tax rate remains level with this, and I guess, I would just note that after everything passes tonight, we'll put out a notice, there'll be a thirty-day notice before your June hearing, and we'll have similar, I know it's kind of a pain, but you'll have similar public hearings related to each project related to the lease with the building corporation, so.
Dr. Sanders, would you like to touch on the need for this project?
Yes, I think this is a very important project also, because, you know, as a school corporation, we want to put our best foot forward for our community, our parents who come to different events. One of the projects is going to be improving the lighting at various athletic fields, and also the sound system at the football field, and also the high school gymnasium. If you've been to one of our games, you, you will know that there are times where you just cannot understand our great announcers, and, you know, as a parent of a, of an athlete, I want to hear my child's name clearly, and, and it's all about creating some pride in our student athletes and our community for these projects. So those are two of the, a part, two of the projects. The other one is related to safety and security upgrades that we want to do around the school corporation in our various schools to address safety for our students and staff.
Thank you very much. I will note that the tax impact information was once again in the resolution that Mr., our bond counsel, Mr. McClellan, has covered, and Stifel provided that information for us, and so I will now officially open the public comment portion of this hearing, anybody who wish to speak, seeing none. I will now officially close the ten twenty-eight public hearing on the school renovations, lighting, and security projects, and now turn it over to the resolution, over to Dr. Sanders.
Yes, so finally, the last resolution, like to ask the board to approve, is the ten twenty-eight resolution for school renovations, lighting, and security project.
I move adoption of the resolution for renovations, lighting, and security project, ten twenty-eight resolution.
I'll second.
Move a second. Any questions, comments?
I have to confess that sometimes it's not the sound system, it's the announcer. I have to confess that sometimes it's not the sound system, it's the announcer.
No, I'm fair to think that, no. I, I do want to mention that we have done an excellent job so far in security, and, but there's always other steps that you can take. So we're looking into various economical things that we can do to increase the security of our buildings, and so we really, and facilities, and so we really think this is very important as part of this, this project. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We did get the motion in the second, right?
Yes.
We got everything this time? I just want to make sure.
We did.
All right, I, I have it on my list, but that was a lot. That was a lot, so.
And I'd like to thank Matt Schumacher, Misha, and Jacob for coming tonight and helping us. This is a lot of information that the board had to review, and hearing their explanations tonight, I think, really helped. I would like to give them the opportunity to leave at this time if you would like to, or you could stay for my superintendent's report, which is at the very end.
Again, making sure that this process is official and legally correct all the way through, so thank you so much. Okay. Turn the page here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have consideration to approve the Indiana University Athletic Training Contract. Dr. Sanders?
It's been a lot tonight.
Yes.
With Matt not being here. This is an annual contract renewal with Indiana University. As you know, we heavily rely on our athletic trainers for the health and safety of our student athletes. They also provide preventative measures to our coaches. Unfortunately, this is the last year for this agreement. IU will no longer be providing this service, so we are already actively engaged to find an alternative plan, but we would like you to approve this particular agreement, which will run through May 31st, 2024.
I move approval.
I'll say.
Move in second. I remember when we first started working with them, and my daughter was the very first patient that was seen by the trainer, so I thought that was kind of interesting.
Unfortunately, I remember a lot of starts.
Anything further?
Unfortunately, I guess, maybe.
Yeah, I've had a great job, and I'm hoping that we can find a suitable replacement after next year.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have consideration to approve the purchase of a carpet extractor. Seems a little deja vu, but.
You took the words right out of me.
It is, seems like deja vu, but we've received some additional funding from the COAG, COAG grant through the Monroe County Health Department, and the, the extractor that you approved last month is the very same one we're asking you to approve tonight. This will result in both elementary schools having their own extractor to keep our carpets clean, and so I'd like to ask the board to approve that.
I move approval of the purchase of carpet extractors.
Hold on a second.
Move in second, any questions, comments?
I know that we were planning on adding it down the road, but it's nice that we're able to do it more quickly than we'd anticipated.
And it's nice that it comes with doing the two projects too for our new carpet, so you have new equipment taking care of it, and so that's, that's nice. Yes.
For the record, could we read in the amount and who we're getting that from?
Thank you.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
And the tenant company?
Is that correct, your tenant company?
The tenant company cost a twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Right.
So any questions?
Just the same exactly as the last one.
Correct.
Same company?
Yes.
Okay.
And so many resolutions, did we have a motion on this in the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you.
She got the number in it.
Christine Bartlett, our counsel here does a great job of keeping us in line, so we appreciate that hard work. So any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have two informational items that our nutrition director Vicki Coffey is going to discuss with us. One is a policy revision, a first reading, and the other is about healthy school happenings this school year.
Hi there. So first with the wellness policy, we brought the WELLSAT review to you, which was the assessment of the wellness policy that was done by the Indiana Department of Health. That was in Jan, we reviewed that in January of 2022, and then brought it to the board in February of 2022. So if you remember that, we had a 138 out of a 200 score. So eighty-three out of one hundred was the comprehensive score, and then fifty-five out of 100 was the strength of the policy. So the Department of Health gave us some suggestions to increase that strength score. The, and by the way, the US, if the USDA requires us to do this, if we participate in the National School Lunch and school, and/or School Breakfast Program, which we do, so we're required to evaluate the wellness policy on a three-year cycle. Our CHAMP's team met March 22nd, reviewed that WELLSAT and the WELLSAT policy, submitted our changes thereafter, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. So this will help us if we change some of these things, the revision of our wellness policy. Some of that language includes some links of the USDA requirements in that, that'll help our strength score. And this is just for your review, the first reading tonight. So, and just to go through those real quickly with you, to change the food pyramid guide to MyPlate, I'm not sure how we missed that one over the years, but that needs to be changed. Add a safe routes to school, we're working on safe routes to school, which is in our healthy happenings, I'll go over here in a minute. Add the link to the USDA Potable Water Act of 2010, that is just where we offer and have available drinking water throughout the breakfast and lunch hours, which we do throughout the course of the day, but at least there. We do have a thirty-minute lunches at least, but in the policy, it says at least thirty minutes to eat. That's not actually what we have currently. We have a thirty-minute lunch, so it would be twenty minutes to eat. And then the Smart Snacks noted that link in there. Eighty percent of grains is what we must serve right now, just adding that language with a link for the Smart Snack fundraising as well. And then the PD standards per USDA for school nutrition folks, we actually have to have a certain amount of mandated professional development to be able to operate the National School Lunch and National School Breakfast Program. That's what I'm bringing to you tonight. Are there any questions on the wellness policy or WELLSAT and what, what we're, we're asking you to just, it's just the first reading.
Okay, and yeah, the, under the physical education item H, one H, I think, yeah, has the required annual hours, and we've got no there, is that a?
Oh, so we, as our wellness team met, those notes that you have in front of you is just what they voted on as far as to change that language or to keep it. So what we're asking tonight is just the things that we are required to change. I, I believe we just felt like that the requirements for physical education can change over the years, and we are doing what the DOE expects us to do, and we, we meet that standard, so we didn't feel like we should, we should add any language there necessarily.
Mayday flexibility, sure, sure. Thank you.
Anything else on that? No?
So this is a first reading, so in June, we'll ask the board to approve the recommended changes.
And now our healthy schools happening.
So years past, we would do a monthly newsletter for the school board of healthy happenings. We changed that pre-pandemic, I believe it was, or pre the height of the pandemic, should I say, should I say, and changed that to an annual healthy happenings. The reason why we did that is because it was rather repetitive when we were doing it monthly. So just to highlight a few things at each school, I did ask the administrators to let me know if I missed anything, and a couple of them did tell me that I missed a few things, which is great, because that means that we're doing healthy happenings without, without my knowledge, so, which I think that's wonderful. The high school, of course, we have the weight room renovation happening, our cardio center is still open for the students and staff. I'm still working on trying to get some additional funding to replace some of that equipment. The walking path, I believe you've probably have seen some folks walking on that. Our goal is to connect our school district and our town, of course, which Dr. Sanders is working with Mike Farmer and some other folks on that, so. And then there are dollars for scholars annually in the fall, and our goal is to have more students involved in that, in running and walking that race. The junior high school, the weight room renovation horsepower was with Mr. Siglin, I don't know if you guys know about that, but lots of kids love it and have actually told me about it, so that's great. The garden club with Taylor Erickson, garden's been moved over at the junior high, closer to the building, and the maintenance folks will be working on cleaning that area for us. The support dog with Brittany Straws happening over there, and then our regulation breaks, which includes a second chance breakfast. We've increased our breakfast participation, which is free, of course, for our students, by about forty-two percent increase over there at the junior high, which is great, since Mr. Siglin's added that. The intermediate school, they're hosting staff yoga, not Yoda, excuse me, yoga and cardio hip-hop classes, although Ms. Lee, we might want to bring Yoda in during yoga, that'd be fun. EIS staff workout room, active fundraisers like the Color Run, they've started Magnificent Mile Club for students, a running club there, the addition of RBB Ghost Free Breakfast Kiosk, so we've started a breakfast kiosk up front for those car riders, and then the support dogs in the works as well. Primary school, we have active fundraisers like Fun Run, Bike Rodeo, March Wellness Month, which it focuses on the lifelines of wellness through our book read, healthy daily habits, exercising, and healthy snacks. The garden club, that's the first grade, they're partnering with the Seedling Flower Truck to rejuvenate that garden there. Earth Fair, focusing on keeping the planet clean and healthy and recycling, which we have just recently installed and implemented our recycling program back into RBB Edgewood Schools, which is great. Take Me Outside Day annually, and then Mrs. Goss, of course, has her EPS Trails and Woods Cleanup Project each year. So that's what we have, the healthy happenings for 2023. I'm sure there's more that's happening out there that we've, you know, accomplished and kept going and sustained for several years, so that's all I have this evening. Thank you. Any questions, I'm sorry, on that?
I want to thank Vicki for leading the effort to make sure our policy stays up to date, and also these healthy happenings. In the past, we've kind of put these healthy happenings in miscellaneous. Well, I thought it deserved a little more attention, so, you know, whenever Vicki would like to give a report like this, it's not going to be stuck in miscellaneous, it's going to be, have its own agenda item, because I think it's that important.
Thank you so much for.
Thank you.
Were you doing the food truck this summer?
Oh, yes, sure. That letter will go out next week to our families, and it'll also be on the DOE site. They have a text number where any family anywhere can text the number and know where our locations are. We'll be at all four of our schools, of course, for summer school, and then we'll be at the Boys and Girls Club and the library this year.
So outside of schools, those two locations?
Yes, yeah, outside of those, those two locations. We did have the YMCA last year, but since they, they eliminated the waiver, it's, it's not eligible, so unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
And now we have consideration to approve the agreement with Skilman Corporation.
Yes, so, you know, one of the first responsibilities I have when I became interim superintendent that summer is that, I think it was summer of 2018, was to start working on the, some of our construction projects, which involved our football complex and also the connector between the two elementary schools. Between now and then, we've, we've learned, Matt coming on aboard, we have learned a lot about the whole process of construction on school facilities, and it's, it's really been something that we would like to take what we've learned and apply it to our next set of projects. And one of those is that we cannot simply get around Matt and I and Arnold on a daily basis to see with our own eyes the progress of construction. Now, we have regular, every Tuesday mornings, it takes a whole morning of construction progress meetings, and we take tours of our facilities when we do that, but a lot of times, if there are problems, they pop up when you're not expecting them. And so we've been looking for a solution, and one of those comes in the form of Skilman. We've done our homework in terms of researching the, what we think is the best company that would benefit our school corporation. Bart York, who's here tonight, has spent, I don't know, countless hours coming down to meet with Matt and I, so this is not just a recent decision, this is something that they've been walking us through, and every time I meet with Bart and his team, I feel like we're making, we're going to be making much better decisions and spending our taxpayer dollars more efficiently by addressing issues proactively instead of a response. Now, the cost of the contract will be $1,720,000, pending any adjustments with reimbursable expenses, but I'd like for the board to approve that agreement. These services will come out of the construction bond fund once all that is approved. And Bart is here tonight to answer any of your questions or clarify anything I just said.
I would like to clarify one item, and that is, our fee is, our fee in staffing is, is actually less than what Dr. Sanders mentioned. The number that he mentioned include a not to exceed of reimbursables and a not to exceed general conditions. So it, normally, those are not included in the, in the conversation of fee, because to get to your question on soft costs, those are costs of, of doing business, if you will. To do a project, typically, we use, not we, not Skilman, but the industry, Steeple, would say twenty to twenty-five percent for soft costs. Now, what you heard this evening was a not to exceed of forty million, thirty-nine, nine ninety-eight. The soft costs and the hard costs make up that total number. It doesn't say that you can't spend less than the, right now, we've designated twenty percent or eight million dollars. You could even spend eight million twenty dollars and, and still be within your requirements. It just means there's twenty dollars less that you would spend in construction. So it's the combination of those two funds. Now, to better explain what the soft costs are, you heard one this evening of the issuance cost. There's also attorney fees that go along with the bonds. There's design fees, there's CM fees, construction management fees, loose equipment, technology, so techn- Technology, so technology, equipment. Quality control. Quality control is something that we would manage on your behalf. And and it's when we pour concrete, we test it. When we put down asphalt, we test it. We're doing these kind of things to have a third party testing company to test it to be sure. When, like in your in your early childcare center, that's a that's a field right now. We got to make sure that that footprint is properly prepared to receive that building. So that's quality testing. Permitting and surveys is another cost that comes out of here. General condi-, I'm sorry. Printing is out of of that general conditions. Insurance builder's risk comes out of of that. So there's a lot of things that come out of that. And it's we provide you the management to help manage those costs to be sure they don't go over. Now, I will have to say, some of those costs are being spent and we may, they don't come through our company. So Dr. Sanders and and Matt will have to let us know. You know, the issuance was talked about not being more than 500,000. Well, it's going to be less than that, so we have to account for that. Once, if we're brought on board, we will develop a budget of all of these different components, including each of your projects, which we have to count for separately and which is a little bit of a challenge. Because one of the things that we have suggested throughout this, as we began to work with you, and Dr. Sanders mentioned Lancer doing your study, that study was estimated by us. So we have been working with them throughout this entire process. But we would, we would provide the estimates through this through this process and and keep you keep you within the budget. We'll at some point in time in the project, I'm sure, have to say, we got to make some priorities. Because we're going to work very hard, I mean, we have to. We have to keep it under forty million dollars. So and I think you heard, if they can sell less bonds and still get your total project, then winners for everybody. I I won't promise that this evening, but we will keep, it is our responsibility to keep you within budget. What we, I I know we've chatted about this at times and we've discussed it. But what we do, we have about a hundred people in our company. And most of them are engineers. Many of them are tradespeople. At one time carried the tools. And and now now they're managers. We do, one of the things that's unique about our company, we do not self perform any work. In other words, we cannot bid any of your work to do it. We will not pour any concrete. We will not build any mason walls. We will not put up any metal studs. We will manage the people that are doing that. And those are the people that will receive your work because they were the lowest, most responsive, responsible bid. And we manage you through that process. So once we get into construction, we will have somebody on those on that project that will manage on your behalf. They're not the superintendent of the general contractor. You know, keep in mind, in the past, when you've done projects, you have got a general contractor that gave you the lowest bid. Most of the time, you took the lowest bid, maybe not always, but the statute suggests that you do. Once you give them that contract, they do have an obligation to build it for you. But they also have an obligation to themselves to help them as much as they can. That's that's their end business. Our role is to be sure that you get the quality that you bought in that bidding process. I started to say, one of the things that we have talked all along of saving you dollars is we believe that the most cost effective way to do this project is to use one site manager. You you have an advantage. All of these projects are basically on your campus. Yeah, there's what? Maybe a half a mile between the buildings. But we believe that we can save you and we've reduced our fee of our staffing responsibilities by saying that we can do it with one. So what we'll do is we will bid the project at one time, but we'll break it up in components. So there'll be a masonry contractor, there'll be a drywall contractor, there'll be a painting contractor. And there'll probably be fifteen or seventeen typically this size project, different contractors that will manage. The advantage that you get is that contractor is bidding to you direct in a public situation. And they know that they have to give you the lowest bid if they're going to get selected. Unlike the other way, that painting contractor would have been a sub to the general contractor. And you really will never know how much his quote to that general contractor was. So there's a lot of methods where we're in the process of of helping you out. The good news is we will be with you from day one with our construction expertise, helping the design team be sure that they designed a project in a way that it can be constructed at the most cost effective, in the cost effective way. You also have another situation that our site manager will be very helpful to you. Once we get into the high school where there's kids and staff that's in the same building that we're trying to build portions of. So that separation is critical. And it's critical to have somebody on the site, again, a part of your team. And we work within your security systems. And 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 that becomes, if you didn't have someone like it, that would be a concern. We do this all the time. And we would be privileged to to help you with your project. And while we've done a lot of projects, I've been doing this, this was my thirty fifth year. I've been involved in a lot of projects, but the most important project that we have right now is your project. And we promise you that we'll bring you our services, our expertise and our talents to your table to help you with your program. I hope I've answered your question on soft costs. They'll be defined. I'll be happy to answer some more questions. But I can't tell you right now, you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars for technology. It's not my place to say that. It's your place to say how much technology you need. And then we put that in the budget. And we put the other components in the budget. And then we begin to add it up and make sure that that budget and your construction budget don't exceed the forty million dollars.
Am I right in assuming that some of the hard costs would include things like wiring for technology?
Oh, yes, we we instu-, we instu-, we install the conduit and and wire. And again, that's a very unique, it's a very good question. Because I can't specifically answer it because I don't know what your technology capabilities are. Some of you have, some school corporations, their staff wants to put in the wiring, the cabling. Some staffs don't don't want to touch it. But we always put in the 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 conduits and 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 work with the school corporation and the architect in the in defining to be sure that we don't miss anything. So we we do, but again, each, I I tell you, each per, each project has its own personality. And and technology has become a real interesting and unique responsibility that we have. And we spend a lot of time on trying to trying to get it right. It's usually the last thing that's done in a project as we begin to clean it up and get ready. And and the the other thing that I might say is that that I probably forgot, I don't want to ramble, but you know, our fee, what was mentioned, is a function of time. It has nothing to do with the percentage of your project. It has to do with time, how much time we're going to spend on a project. And as I've mentioned to Matt and Dr. Sanders, I really don't like to have the staff working on a project that we're not getting paid for. So you're going to pay for twenty months of our time and we have to get it done. And that is our reputation of getting projects finished on time. Now, if it's not done in twenty months for one reason or another, we're not going to charge you anymore. But again, I don't like to have our staff working and not getting paid for it. So there's a real incentive for us to get it finished on time. And I know this has been painful for you at times of not getting projects done and and something that I believe you'll see a different approach. Again, we're on your side on this.
With the soft costs also, and I and I thank you for explaining all that. Because I remember I first met you a year ago over in the other building over there.
Yes.
And you started throwing a soft cost percentage, it's like, holy moly. And but I'm starting to get a better understanding of it. And I don't, if I don't understand something, I'm going to ask. So I apologize for that, that's just how I am. But the equipment, like the cafeteria equipment, cafeteria tables, the furniture, that's all soft, soft cost?
A good question. Loose equipment, let's take the chair in the cafeteria. That would be a soft cost.
Okay.
But the oven
Anything that's attached.
in the kitchen that is attached to the wall with power is a part of the project.
Because it's attached to the building.
It's attached.
Correct.
So so the kitchen equipment, and 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 again, this will be very important as we develop the planning and the budget of what equipment can you still use? And 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 I'm not saying a hundred percent of it. I'm not even saying ten percent of it. I don't know. But I can say this, any amount of equipment that we can use will be money that doesn't have to be used for new equipment. So but that's hard cost typically.
Okay. So for any, and if there is, for example, because I've talked to some other schools that they've had, they've had some additional funds left over from soft, soft costs. And they've used that to apply to pay down the bonds. We we may have that possibility.
You may have that.
Or we could do another, we could have to do another project to improve our.
Well, we have a lot of owners that, you know, one of the other things that's in this, this, this soft cost is contingency.
Right.
And and so, you know, we hope that we don't spend all your contingencies. So for about halfway through your project, if there's still some dollars available, you know, there may have been something that you would like to have had and you didn't think you could afford. Now, all of a sudden, you have a little bit of money to do that. Or you can not pay as pay down the debt. You could do a lot of things. But we'll, but we, you know, usually we start out with a a double for contingency and and we don't spend all of that. Again, as we do the estimate, you know, we, I forgot to speak to here at a public, one of the most important things that we do, and that is, as a designer is designing it, we're estimating at least three times, schematic, design development and final. And during those period of time, we're, we're looking at seeing if that design can be built. Or can it be built at a, in a different manner and still get you the same end product? Well, that's a way to save dollars also as we go through the process.
Okay.
We will have some questions and issues that we're going to, you're going to have to figure out priorities. I haven't seen a project yet that doesn't come up with that kind of question. But but again, the other thing I should say, our system of communication is all live, online. Dr. Sanders and Matt will have access to it.
Right.
And and they will know everything that we know on a day to day basis.
Okay. And they won't have to deal with, you you'll take care of all the bidding process.
We take care of all the bidding. We will, we will want you to be the, we'll want somebody to be there, certainly. We'd want to do it probably in this room. We will process that more.
Right.
We're getting, we're getting into the weeds and some of the things that we do. But one of the more important things that is a require, is that we're doing a service now is we start marketing your project. We have to go out and solicit basically contractors to do your work because they have opportunity to do other work. And 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 right now, contractors haven't recovered from COVID. They they haven't replenished their supply of workforce. Sometimes the workforce isn't there to replenish. And and certainly, we're still having trouble with material procurement at times. But so we're, we're out beating the streets, so to speak, of wanting contractors to bid your project. And we have a great following because they know that we're going to finish it on time.
Right.
They know we're going to manage it fairly. And if they deserve some additional money because of one reason or another, we'll be fair with that at the same time. If they don't, we will remind them, they already bid it that way.
Okay.
So so, you know, again, our objective is to try to get as many contractors to bid your project, break it up in categories that make sense for local contractors. We will be very concentrating on what I'll call Southern Indiana contractors to to get them engaged. You're not the first Southern Indiana school corporation that we work for. So we again know that that base of contractors. And and again, competition is the name of the game.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I need approval for the contract with Skilman Corporation.
A second.
Second. One thing I will say in this truck too is that when we list what goes into each of these projects, we list more than what we're actually getting the money to do. So that, and we do that so that if we are able to save funds, that we can, we've already prepared for using those funds somewhere else where the need is at. So that that helps as as well for that. Any questions? Christine, is there anything that needed to be stated?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
All right. If we hear, hear nothing else, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much, Bart. You've been working with us for a long time and and.
We look, we look forward.
So and I think this is an important aspect of our projects. We have gone through, we've had material delays, we've had delays in getting projects done because of this, that and the other. And not having a construction manager was a key to those problems. So I believe this is a great way for the school corporation to go.
If they are saying the construction project, you can either let it pass or you can say it's happened. So we try to do the one.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have consideration to approve an agreement with Fanning Howie. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, actually, I'd like to ask Andy Shoal or Jennifer Barrett to come forward. They've been working for quite some time on a project for their cafeteria. And the Fanny Howie agreement is with a architect that they've been working with to help them design what they want to do in the cafeteria and also to help secure bids for the cafeteria equipment, which would be tables and chairs and such. The cost of the agreement is eight thousand dollars and would be funded by the GEO bond. And Andy and Jennifer?
All right, good evening. This is a project that we've, actually predates me, I believe. Vicki came to Jen pre pandemic, before I was even hired in nineteen, and said that there's some funding available to enhance your your cafeterias, to increase students eating at school and just create a better. at school, and just create a better environment. And since, I don't think anything's been done in the cafeteria much since, you know, it was originally built 20 years ago, we solicited some ideas from some different companies. We really liked what Fanning Howie brought to us as far as tables and chairs. Have some traditional tables in there, as well as some non-traditional, different heights. Currently in the cafeteria, I think there's, there are a variety of heights, but it wasn't intentional. Some tables are 27 inches high and some are 29.
You do what you have to do.
So this new project, again, has a lot of, has some traditional tables in there, as well as some high-top tables that are a little bit taller. And they're also in a variety of amounts of students that sit at them, so a student's not forced to be at a table with 12 students. There are some tables with three and two and some smaller amounts to give some more flexibility there. We were able, even able to get some tables up next to our windows, so if you didn't necessarily want it to be across the table from someone, you can look outside. Another aspect that Fanning Howie brought to us was some sound dampening baffles and things for the cafeteria, because with 200 students eating in there, and just talking at a normal level, it's, it's pretty loud. So they were able to procure for us their leaves that hang from the ceiling, create a real nice ambiance in there, and also some panels for the walls. And then with a color scheme that's going to be much more calming, and we feel like it'll be a real, I mean, a real aesthetic lift to our building.
I don't have anything to add to that. Andy did a fabulous job. He's been taking the lead on this project all year, and has really been doing a good job of getting those bids in, getting the vendors in, explaining what we've been looking for, and I agree with him. Even though we've had some struggles getting to this point, Fanning Howie is really giving us what we asked for originally. Andy's going to have to do some more backend work on this than what he anticipated, but I think that the reward and the payoff for this is going to be well worth the time spent, for sure.
Questions, do we have a motion?
No, move approval.
I'll second.
Move in second. Seems like you're going to have some preferable seating, so is there processes that you have that you're going to put in place so that there's some equity in, in how those preferred seedings are used?
Absolutely. We've already just started talking about that a little bit. We have a lot of rewards built into our programming at EIS. So some of those things might be a classroom that's high-performing, you know, and there's special areas for that week, and they get those preferred seats, you know, that are around the corner with the booths. It could be that, you know, our ambassadors start out there, you know, as soon as they are named in the classroom, that might be their seating for the first couple of weeks of school. It could be that they earn those seats with accelerated reader points. There are a lot of options that we can use, I think, throughout the year to say, let's change this up, let's give the kids another incentive to work towards. So what we envision is that it's not necessarily one piece at any point in the year. What we have found with third, fourth, and fifth graders is that we have to continually entice them. So if we see that there's an area that is weakening for us a little bit, then we can turn that right around and say, okay, these seats are an opportunity to earn X, Y, and Z through A, B, and C. So, yeah, I think it'll be interesting to see how we can do that. Third and fourth grade still sits in assigned seats, so this may even be a good incentive for them to get out of those assigned seats, be able to choose who they want to sit with and where they want to sit after we have procedures in place and things like that. So this is going to be all new for us as well, and so we're going to be kind of making some of these decisions and figuring it out as we go. It truly is going to feel more like a restaurant, if you will, or a cafe than, you know, a school cafeteria, so it'll be nice.
We even talked with Mr. Larry, our custodian over there, because he said, I hear you're thinking about bringing in some chairs, and we can't have too many chairs in here. I go, all right, Larry, we'll just have some chairs, and we'll keep some of your pop-up tables, too.
Yeah, a good balance there. Larry's back can only take so much of our 20-plus-year-old tables, so he's actually pretty thrilled to have something that actually has a working mechanism on it now, so he will be very thankful to push this through tonight as well.
And I understand that 258 will be the seating capacity, is that, okay.
Yeah, we're now able to, we're ready to grow, so when that time comes, we'll be able to seat extra kids in there.
In fact, the original table from 21 years.
Many of them are. When we've had, when we've grown over the years, Vicki has accommodated us by getting some extra tables from EPS. If they're down in numbers, then we're up in numbers, that's where our table sizes have come from. But yes, many, if not a vast majority of our tables are the original to the building.
Sharing between the two buildings at times?
Might have had to at some point.
Oh, yeah, we might have had to at some point.
Because I guess at least we'd like kind of, please, the next question is, I assume EPS might be considering doing this at some point, too.
We have had a conversation with EPS, so you.
Okay.
Okay, because I mean, it's, I mean, they're both, the board.
The building's built at the same time.
So this is what her did reach out, I don't know, probably a few months ago, and I did let her know that we have had this money earmarked for quite some time. But, and that being said, so in order for me to pay for it, we have to have a collaboration of the administrator, administration, and myself to build participation within the lunch and breakfast, school lunch programs. So that, we've worked on this for a good five, I mean, five or six years, you know, that participation, and we can do it. So yes, this is what her did reach out a few months ago, and I just said, hey, hey, tight for a minute, you know, we have to start working on some processes for Andy's participation that you want me to.
Okay.
If you, if you had a first rate, you might want to start.
Right. Well, I saw Mr. Wood taking notes while you were going down that path, I thought, because they're both kind of going down that same, yes.
You got to get 600.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
But they're small.
Right.
I like the fact that there's, the sound dampening, I, I think that if.
Yes.
That's something that we should probably look at very soon about doing at the, at the primary school.
Right.
Because of those rooms. And in the design of EECC and the cafeteria, kitchen projects, you know, that's something we need to have in, in mind as well, so.
A couple of the companies came in and actually measured how much sound was coming out during those times, and being exposed to it for an extended period of time was actually harmful, the level that it reached. So I do feel for, Andy and I are only back there 30 minutes a day. Each one of us takes a lunch, and then we have somebody else who covers a third lunch. The cafeteria staff who is back there for a solid two hours during the day, I do worry about them, because 200 kids make a lot of noise. And coming off of those brick walls, it's, it's something. So we're really hopeful that this will make a difference, but I, I definitely agree, it's something that as a district, we need to continue to look at. It's probably something that was not even considered 25 years ago when these buildings were designed, but it definitely is a concerning issue that was brought to us that we hadn't even thought about before.
You know it's loud, but you don't think about it.
Oh, we know it's loud, yes.
Was that curtain discussed also, the curtain that goes up to the stage? I know that was, that's not part of this project, right?
Yes, that's going to be in the, in the bond project, is my understanding.
Okay. I didn't know what the final verdict, if we're going to actually do it, or have like a portable wall, or?
Process of getting quotes for that.
Yeah, so different project, but it is coming.
Are you thinking a portable wall, or are you thinking another curtain?
Both. We'll keep the portable wall in there, and then we'll go ahead and replace the curtains on both sides. So the portable wall can be on either side.
That'll dampen, that'll dampen, too.
Yes, so that helps a little bit as well. And really, the curtains help. You would be surprised, when you're in the gym, you don't hear much of the noise going on in the cafeteria.
Right.
Those big thick curtains do make a big difference.
You've got two curtains and a divider wall.
Two curtains and a divider wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further? Got a motion in a second for, for the equipment? Oh, this is the Fanning Howie stuff?
Fanning Howie, yeah.
Yes, so we have, it was $8,000, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. And now we need to talk about the EIS Cafe equipment.
Yes, so Fanning Howie has already secured bids for the cafeteria, and you want to go over the recommendations, or you want me to, Andy?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so recommendations are for Sharp School Services for $20,509, $17,308.35 for a commercial office environment, and then $45,163.67 from RGE Business Interiors. The total is $82,981.22. The purchase of the cafeteria furniture will be paid for, paid for through the pay-down plan for the lunch fund, and so if you have any questions on that, or the equipment, Andy, Jennifer, or Vicki should be able to help us out.
Purchase of the cafe equipment?
Move in second. Questions, comments?
The AmTab and the LE, or those are just other, other bids that we got?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, I'm not really sure I was reading it right.
Nothing further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
You have a standing invitation to lunch at EIS next year. You might even be able to hear each other, yeah, yes.
Are they going to be able to do this during the summer?
That's the goal, yes.
Okay, consideration to approve a transfer to the rainy day fund. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we would like to ask the board to approve transfer of $200,000 from the education fund to the rainy day fund. This is an amount that Matt has been tracking in his cash flow documents for you, and this transfer will eliminate, reduce, depending on the size of the, of a potential surprise, but the transfer will eliminate the impact of potential surprises and provide a cushion to adapt to changing needs. The transfer of the $200,000 will bring our rainy day fund up to $1.2 million. And if you remember, 2018, we didn't have anything in the rainy day fund, so I think it's pretty good, and Matt deserves a lot of credit for helping us get to this point.
Do we have a motion?
I need approval.
I second.
Any questions?
Kudos to Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin for, because when I started 18, then we had zero, and I was, I was nervous, Rick, I thought, what happened to it? So that makes me feel a lot better, too. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we have approved of the agreement with the deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we're asking the board to approve a contract with Amy Green to provide deaf and hard-of-hearing services in our school corporation for the 2023-24 school year. Ms. Green has actually started with us this past March. Mrs. Anderson has reported that she's exceeded our expectations, to the point that we would like to have Amy back all next year. And Jennifer Anderson is here tonight if you have any questions, but I recommend your approval.
I recommend approval of the agreement with Amy Green for deaf and hard-of-hearing teaching.
I second.
Any questions?
We, she does this on a, like, an hourly basis, right, as needed? Is that right?
Yeah, she meets them in the minutes of the students' ID's that have deaf hard-of-hearing services, and she's contracting with us. We have so few.
Right, right.
It's, it's just a contracted hourly basis.
Right, right. And about, about how many hours a week is she working now?
Direct services and indirect services combined is around 45 minutes per week, if you want to divide that weekly.
Oh, okay.
Almost.
Minimal, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And what's the rate per hour?
60.
60, okay.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Now we have consideration to renew the subscription with Incident IQ.
Yes, so Rick Rauten, our technology director, is asking the board to approve this annual renewal for Incident IQ. The program enables the tech department to handle help desk tickets and maintenance requests, and to track our assets. The total cost is $13,227.3, and that would be paid for out of our operations fund. And Rick is at most of our meetings, but he couldn't be here tonight, so if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to turn them over to Rick.
Don't ask your technology question.
I need approval.
I'll second, okay.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, our last action item of the evening is approve math textbook adoption.
Right, so I think maybe a year ago, really, our alignment, vertical alignment of our curriculum is something we've been talking about doing for several years, and I asked Jennifer Barrett.
She was.
Okay. I asked, I thought I saw her here. I asked Jennifer Barrett to lead the process of working with our, our teachers from kindergarten through the high school, to align our curriculum, to address areas, gaps in, in our curriculum, and to get us to a point where we would be able to adopt a math curriculum K through 12. And that's not done very often, but yet the team led by Jennifer has brought us a recommendation to recommend that we adopt the McGraw-Hill Reveal Math for our K-12 math program, and I'm just going to try to scroll down to that while I'm talking. I will add that they've put in a lot of hard work for getting us to this point, a lot of time and effort, where we've had our teachers take professional leave days to work on this project. Now, the, as you probably have heard, recently, the state of Indiana has voted to prohibit school corporations from charging students for curriculum materials as defined in Indiana Code 20-18-2-2.7, which includes not being able to charge for books, hardware that will be consumed or used by a single student during the semester or school year, computer software, and digital content. The state will be providing schools with reimbursement based on our fall membership count, that we would get those funds starting in October, November, whenever those funds arrive into our accounts. So that did put a little pause in what we wanted to do here. We gave careful consideration of some other options, rather than going with the traditional six-year adoption. I had some further conversations with McGraw-Hill, and I feel a lot better about recommending to the board that we go ahead with the six-year adoption. We considered a one-year adoption, but we would pay so much more money that way, we don't get the cost break that you would get with a six-year adoption. And the state is also going to be putting out a list of approved textbook companies, which also gave us some pause of whether or not we should move forward. The problem with waiting on, on that is they won't have that done until July of 2024, so we would not have the math program that we need, not only for next school year, but for the following school year, because July 2024 would be too late, really. So I spoke to the McGraw-Hill rep, and he reminded me, which I knew and had forgotten, but he reminded me that. that just recently, two thousand twenty-one, the state put out some criteria for textbooks, and they were rated one of the top in the state. And so I asked him to put in writing, which is, right now is an email, but put in writing that if there, anything did come up, that the state changes, that is not currently part of their system, that they would make the appropriate adjustments for us. And I feel pretty assured that they will be one of the companies that will be approved because of their current high-level status. Jennifer, do you have anything you would like to add throughout the whole process? Yeah.
I think the biggest thing I would say is I felt the same way Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin did when the guidance came out from the state to pause. If it wasn't for the fact that we paused a year ago and we entered into a one-year adoption K through five with Ready Math and paid out the wazoo for it, and if it wasn't for the fact that we do not have a good primary resource, six through twelve, what we are currently using is a hodgepodge mixture of outdated textbooks and teacher-curated materials from multiple sites, not necessarily research-based resources. I would say absolutely let's wait a year and let's continue to do what we are already doing. The problem is, we can't wait a year. We don't have a primary resource K through twelve, let alone even in one grade level, to say that that's adequate for our students for the upcoming year. Reveal Math is one that was highly rated. It received the highest rating possible in the Keep Indiana Learning Independent Study of math resources that were available for adoption a year ago. We purposely held off on an adoption at that time because we wanted to see what was out there. We wanted to see how schools were doing with it. We didn't want to be the guinea pigs. We've reached out to schools that did adopt Reveal, and just like with anything, you know, they'll tell you, you know, there are definitely positives, but there are pieces that, you know, we're still supplementing or things that, you know, we're still learning about. That's going to be the case with anything. But the textbooks themselves and the content of them have been highly rated in terms of the standards and the mathematical processes that we need to be implementing in our classrooms. So I feel very confident that when the state completes their review, that this textbook will be on there K through twelve as an option. And like Dr. Sanders said, if it's not, I also feel confident that McGraw-Hill will make sure that this resource is up to date and up to standard with what the schools are needing in order to implement these in the classroom. So I feel good about moving forward with it. I feel like it's going to be the first time since I've been here and maybe since, I don't know, Dirk might be able to speak to previous years from that, but the first time that we've truly had a primary resource in our math classrooms K through twelve. So that that continuity is there, that consistency is there, that vocabulary, that practice. The kids are getting that consistently from year to year, and I truly think that that's going to make a difference. It's not going to drive everything that we do, because we all know that our curriculum documents and the teamwork that we put into that is what drives it. But the fact that we will have a common primary resource to go back to and draw on first and foremost will make a huge difference in our planning for our teachers, our grade levels, and our content areas like algebra, geometry, and Algebra II.
Do we have motion?
I have new approval for adoption of the math textbook, and thank you for all you did for that. Appreciate it.
It was honestly my pleasure. Give that to me anytime.
I'll second the motion.
Move the second. Any questions?
Well, I would like to add that the total cost for the six years would be three hundred and eighty-seven, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. I didn't say that quite right, but, and that would be through McGraw-Hill. And also, just to make note, looking at the cost of the one year, was over, over a hundred thousand dollars just for one year. So when, you know, I found that out, it just made sense to recommend the six-year.
The three, the three seventy-eight dollars, based on our current number of students?
Yes.
Could it, could it go up every year?
We make, you always can make adjustments to the.
Okay. All right, and then that's, we don't, we won't get reimbursed for that, we don't think?
Well, the state will be giving, right, but we won't be charging textbook rental for that.
Okay, and then will we come back and do, like, with the high school, like, pre-calc and calc? Will we have a separate?
So.
Recommendation? I was going to ask Mr. Yules, yeah, I mean, not.
We're using Reveal Math for all levels, right?
It takes you, it takes you to Algebra II, I saw.
Algebra II.
We'll have to reconsider.
For those upper level, what would you do? You got, you have a plan in place?
Calculus has its own guidelines with IU, the AP, pre-calculus, we will not talk about this one.
Okay.
Pre-calculus would be the only other class. Finite is IU.
Finite's IU, okay.
Calculus is IU, and AP Stats is college board. So pre-calculus is the only class.
Well, okay. Well, and with the new law, will students be, I mean, will students be responsible for buying their textbooks for calculus? I don't know, I mean.
Right.
Is that?
Well, tonight, you course, that's an IU, yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of this that we're, we will be sorting through at the state over the next month.
This change in the law is another one of the frustrating things that school corporations have, where the state is saying, you know, you can have math, but you have to use one of these few people to.
Right.
For that subject. And I, I think that taking the local control away from the diversity of our corporation compared to other corporations and our resources compared to other resources is such that the state, again, just dabbling into things that should be left to local control, so.
And really not giving you any time to react.
Right.
You know, a lot of hard work went into this, and all of a sudden.
Yeah, they're going to do that, and what about the people last year that went into a six-year program?
But this will enable us, if we get your approval tonight, will enable us also to get on the schedule with the state, well, if they continue to do that, but they have always had, like, a textbook caravan. And we have been off of that schedule, and this will get us on to that schedule every year now.
And McGraw-Hill is a premier name in textbooks, so that's.
Right.
That's good.
And I've been doing textbook adoption for many, many years, and, you know, these companies are really based in California and Texas, but they make adjustments to their programs for each state. And if they find out that there are certain criteria in a particular state, believe me, they will make those adjustments so they could be profitable within that state, so. I have, I have no worries about McGraw-Hill making those adjustments.
And this is straight subscription? We're not, this is not a hard textbook at all?
No, they're not hard textbooks. That's also the nice piece. Anything that needs to be changed can be done from year to year. All of the six through twelve textbooks will be e-ditions. Teacher editions are all online, and for the K through five classrooms, there will be consumable workbooks in addition to the student e-edition. So what that means is that if changes need to be made going into the next school year, they'll make those reprint, whatever consumable needs to be reprinted. We'll have new copies and updated copies as those changes are made. We, we already know that changes are coming to the math standards. In the next year, the, one of the pieces of legislature is that the state is required to eliminate twenty-five percent of the math standards at every grade level. Not move them to another grade level, but truly eliminate them. So they are going through the process now of determining which standards will be eliminated, which ones are fluff, if you will, or which ones are no longer necessary. So we will see some of those changes being made, which means that absolutely will impact schools across the entire state and their primary resources that they're using.
Right, so they'll do, if it changes, then they can just do an update electronically and.
Absolutely.
We're rolling with it.
And we'll be good to go for the following year, yes.
Vertical alignment and oxymoron, English teacher?
Well, typically, you know, with, the right way to do curriculum is to make it, it's an ever-living document. So you have to be adjusting it really from year to year.
Absolutely, and throughout the year. Our teachers are meeting all the time and reassessing as they're heading into a unit. Is this truly an essential standard? Do we want to go through the entire PLC process with this standard? Are we seeing that we have something that's listed as important but should be essential? So this is an ongoing conversation that we have all year long. Even though we start the year on day one and think we're good to go, we're constantly reassessing that.
Because the ones that have kind of hodgepodge some things can't do that. They can sell it out, I guess, but they have to use it, okay.
They need to use it, and that's going to be on our administrative team to ensure that that happens. Our instructional coaches to ensure that that happens. We absolutely need to be using research-based materials, not what teachers are buying from teachers pay teachers. Those are certainly not research-based by any means, and not that they aren't good, not that they can't be used in some capacity, not that they aren't supplemental. Heaven knows, every teacher is going to need to pull extra practice and things like that and approach it in a different way. That's the beauty of teaching. There's an art to it. But that should not be our primary resource, our go-to, and that's what we need to change.
Okay.
Anything further? Motion is seconded. The amount's been stated in the McGraw-Hill. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks again for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I would just like to once again thank Jennifer for her hard work this year. She knows her stuff when it comes to curriculum.
If you ever create a personal director position, I might.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, I know we've been here for a long time, but, so I'll try to be brief. I just, at this May board meeting every year, I just try to highlight some of the great things that have happened during the school year. Our school year will come to an end on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, and we've had some really cool things happen this year. We received a huge three-point-four million dollar SMART grant to support mental health. Our marching Mustangs and winter percussion teams won state championships this year. Our coffee corral continues to grow and expand and will go even further next year. We've had our first, as far as I know, first high school-produced podcasts started this year. As we've just been talking about, the math curriculum horizontal and vertical alignment. We've had a number of our teachers and students and programs recognized this year. And of course, we always like to mention our donations. I think we rarely go a month without having some donations, so we appreciate all those people. And then back in December, I don't know if you remember that superintendent's report, but I highlighted a number of things that our students were doing to give to others. So that's the kind of partnerships we want for Edgewood Schools is not only to receive from our partnerships, but also to give back. We've started an outstanding Edgewood High School internship program, and we've had a number of students, I'm getting ready to send you a, I didn't have time today, but I saw a video of some of the paid interns through the Uplands Project and that highlighted a couple of our seniors. And we had Logan Anderson, who did a presentation. He was on a panel down at the ROI Regional Report. And so appreciate that hard work that Jamie Miller puts into that and others. We've had our first cohort of ELOT seniors. Those are the seniors that go out and serve as mentors and helpers at Briefford Woods, and this was the first year for that, and they did a fantastic job. We opened up our new administration office, and I, every day I walk into it, I'm very glad. It's just a great place, and when we have our meetings here, I think I told you about the meeting we had with Senator Yoder over the sidewalk, and everybody walked in, said that this is a really nice facility that our community should be proud of. And just, we just had a lot of continued growth and innovative learning opportunities in all of our schools and great accomplishments by our students and teachers. RBB should be proud of the students and the staff and administration we have here in our community. And I just wanted to give you a list of the end-of-year celebrations. I know you're all very busy, but if you have a chance to attend one or more of these awards programs, I know it's always, it does the heart good for our teachers and administrators to see a board member come to one of these programs. So if you have time, I wanted to give you the dates and times for those. And of course, our, I have the date wrong there. Class of twenty-three commencement is June third at eleven o'clock. So apologize for that mistake there. And then Envision Ellisville is going to be given a community update. It's been a year ago since they kicked off that initiative. The community update will be May sixteenth, tomorrow at six o'clock in the Ellisville Town Hall, if you can make that tomorrow night. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Now, we have RBB EA comments, and for that, we have Mr. Doug Yules.
Good evening, everybody. Been a busy evening. Pop quiz real quick for Mrs. Barrett, Mr. Scholl, Mr. Ackerman. How many school days left? Boom. She knows. I'm sure you all know.
I had no idea. I'd read it.
Yeah, it's getting close, that's for sure. Looking forward to a little celebration for our locals at the high school, Mrs. Wright and Mr. Hammett as well. So on the personnel, Sam Jones, volleyball coach, like to congratulate him. He's just full of positive energy, always looking to do something to promote all of our athletics, so that's kind of neat. So congratulations to him. Briefford Woods, I'm sure that was a defining moment for the kids last week. You guys survived. I remember my wife him for years and always heard the stories, good and bad otherwise, so good times. I have no legislative update, because if you lived around here, if you know Cowboy Bob, he always said, if you had nothing good to say, don't say anything at all. So we'll just leave that at that. I tell you what's pretty exciting, and at first I saw the length of the agenda. I'm like, oh, my goodness. But all the building projects, that stuff, you know, teachers in the trenches, we don't always see that or hear that. And only if you come to this or you talk to people. Pretty exciting to hear all those things, so I really just want to say thanks to all you guys for looking at the big picture and keeping those things going, because the teachers will appreciate the benefits of that stuff, without a doubt. Big thing, math curriculum adoption. I was part of that committee, and everything they said was spot on. We've been working with our own stuff, trying to work together and all that. It has been a hodgepodge. It's, I think it's good for the new teachers and the veteran teachers. You know, we do have a curriculum guide, and I always keep telling my math teachers to the point of just repeating myself all the time. We're good at that as teachers. Our curriculum guide is our roadmap. You don't necessarily have to have a textbook, but a unifying curriculum will make things a lot better so that we can be cohesive. That'll just help like crazy. Like I said, if somebody steps out or retires, we have a curriculum map, but we also have these documents, the textbook to go by, because new teachers really need, they need that. They can't always ask us every time, so huge, huge, huge. So look, excuse me, looking forward. Huge, huge, huge. So look, excuse me, looking forward to that, and here we are, at the end of another year. So thank you for all your work, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much. We'll have board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Durnell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for your time. I'm excited about the building projects. I appreciate all the work you've done. Jennifer, thanks for your updates on the math. That's great. So I'll let it go with that. Thank you, sir.
Again, ditto to what Mr. Durnell said. Thanks, thanks for all the hard work that everyone's put in this evening. It's a long, long meeting tonight, so thank you for your time. Best of luck with graduation coming up. And congrats to the high school teachers with the retirement party tomorrow. So thank you.
Mr. DeMoss?
I just want to thank everybody for their donations, and unlike Mr. Yules, I don't think I have to not say it. The General Assembly failed education this year. They had a chance to do something about financing, and they just fumbled it, or maybe they just ignored it, and they did nothing to address teacher shortage in Indiana. In fact, they just exacerbated it. But I'm not bitter at all. Bradford Woods, I got a chance to run up, and the ELOT kids were great, and the kids, the, well, I had a special part in what was going on, but the kids were, I mean, were a lot of fun. And congratulations to the Math Academic Super Bowl team. Went into the competition with the number one seed. I hadn't heard anything else since then. Is that? How did they end up?
I finished fourth overall career disposition bowl, among others.
Okay, I just, all right, so I just, yeah, yeah. Well, they got a new coach, right?
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to graduation.
Thank you. I want to just thank everybody for coming tonight and sticking out this long meeting. It was a very important meeting, meetings. We had a lot of public hearings that were necessary to do great things here at RBB, and I love how we all work together to get these things done. And I always like to say every year, my favorite part of being on the school board is graduation, watching each of those students go across the stage, and I concentrate on each face and just think about, you know, all the good times, bad times, you know, all their career here at RBB, and hopefully they have a lot of great memories to take with them. So with that, congratulations again to the graduates, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night.